All right, let's call this meeting to order, please.
It is 5:38.
Welcome to the Open Space Committee Regular Meeting in the town of Dayton. Today is Wednesday, August 7th, 2024. It is 5:38 PM. We are meeting in the Primetime Building at 1059 Somerset Avenue in Dayton, Massachusetts, 02715. You can also join us via Zoom. Meeting ID is 852-3994-1073. The passcode is 123722. You can also dial in by phone at 1646-931-3860. This meeting is being recorded. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's go ahead and take a roll call, starting on my left.
Good evening. Leonard Hall is present.
Danica Bellinat, clerk, present.
And Robert Gere, Chairman, present. We should probably note for the record that Mr. Gale is absent tonight, and that was an anticipated absence. We will see him at our next meeting. Speaking of our next meeting, I would like to see if we'd like to entertain September 4th, the first Wednesday of the next month, at the 5:30 time slot.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the next meeting will be Wednesday, September 4th, 2024, at 5:30 PM.
Second?
All in favor? Oppose? Motion carries unanimously.
I will probably be there on Zoom. I will have a newborn baby.
Congratulations.
All goes well.
All right, now it'll be time for public input. Slide that in to see if anybody likes to talk. It doesn't look like there's any participants currently, but we will monitor the weight room throughout the meeting. I guess we can start with old business. What we've got in front of us is the 2021 to 2028 Open Space and Recreation Plan Action Items. And, excuse me, one moment, I apologize. I need to refer to our action items. There we go. So we, if I'm not mistaken, last left off at the number 20, leading to 21. And...
Yep.
Just, I guess for the record, we've been, as a committee, and for those who might join later or read this in record, as a committee, we've been meeting and identifying the action steps in Section 9 of our 2021-2028 Open Space and Recreation Plan. Every month, we have been moving through the action items, identifying other committees that might be responsible or are already in action, and/or how our committee can supplement help and/or assistance or take the lead. And so we are now at 21, unless anybody objects. All right, thanks, take it away.
I think that we had noted that was completed. So 21 has developed the North Dayton Playground area, improving and adding an additional playground.
So that is complete?
I think that's completed. I'm assuming that's the, that really nice, next to the ball field, the handicap accessible access.
Yeah, that is, and that actually still continues. I think somebody's continuing to do work on it, because it looks like it's had another layer of love.
They're going to be upgrading the fencing to the area to protect the home behind the ball field.
Oh, good idea.
So there'll be some, major work is done.
That's a good-looking bill. I wish people would monitor the dog signs. That's another subject. Oh, you know, you're right, we did get on. 22 is DDIC and Ag, correct? So then, yeah, I think we did...
No, I don't think, I don't think we talked about it, though. We didn't.
All right, then I'll remove that note.
I think I had previously noted it, that it was completed in a different meeting.
Okay. So then, 22? Somebody like to read off? Develop and install uniform wayfinding signage for all town-owned properties, local lead, potential partners. So let me reread that, I'm sorry. Develop and install uniform wayfinding signage for all town-owned properties, period. Local lead and potential partners are the selectmen, ourselves, Trails, Highway. All Town Departments, as it would be related to their signage, and Boards, Commissions with property interests, and others as necessary and appropriate. Looks like, like, the immediate goal, needed objective to address would be Parks and Rec and have, yeah, it would be to work through Parks and Rec first, and then Pathways and Greenways next.
Is that something that Open Space does, or does specific departments and committees that, that applies to? Is that not their responsibility?
Be maybe the owner of the site, like whoever kind of maintains that site?
Like the superintendent or manager, even, what we're talking, like the city properties, I believe, right?
There is a policy.
Like city?
What, what happens is, I'm sorry, we'll say Park and Rec would have, make a request of certain signs to the Board of Selectmen, and if they approve it, then it would go to Mr. Ferry for installation, creation and installation, depending on how complicated it was.
Of course.
Some of them you can just make, some of them have to go out to bid or...
To a vendor or whatnot, yeah. I think the word that stands out to me here is the word "uniform" wayfinding signage, and I don't know if that maybe changes the equation? Because I, myself, have been touring Town Hall. Our signage is, I mean, so that would be, you know, a nice goal, I think.
Well, I, before we would go forward, I think we need to see if it is a policy or a bylaw, because if it's a policy, then we can work with the Board of Selectmen. But if it's a bylaw, that's obviously a town vote, a town involvement, and we'd have to probably have a public hearing on it. Is there a need for more uniformity? Absolutely, absolutely.
I guess my question is, is that at the time that this plan was approved, and I believe put in front of the selectmen, right?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, and was approved back in 2021, I would imagine, that at the time, the people, as I've found, that added and contributed, would have probably had to have some foresight into whose responsibility it was, and maybe we could take it on, not so much, because I would imagine it would be each site's, for lack of a better word, supervisor, to make sure that its facility is maintained in order. And I imagine that as a city or a Town Department, pardon me, or government entity, we would stand to want to be on the forefront of the way we look and present ourselves to the community, because that is who we represent.
We could, we could.
So with all of that, as deep as we go, or, you know, down that rabbit hole, we could reel it back in and just say, hey, you know, this is something that maybe not is our first priority, when we get down to that list, because I remember number 16 was really, I thought it spoke to us a lot, maybe more than, this is not the most important thing we put at the top of the list. What do you guys think?
I just see that as a potential few minds.
Like stepping on toes?
Yeah, departments have a tendency of being very protective of their turf.
Yeah.
So, I mean, working, helping, like a park and rec situation?
Right.
Yes, I will, there is a situation right down on 138 right now, which came up in a conservation meeting, at the last conservation meeting, where the Lions Club put a sign at the Trail.
Okay.
You go down 138, almost into Somerset, look on the left into, there's a, there's a trail back there, and then there is a sign sponsored by the Lions Club. That conservation called them out on it. Obviously, someone put it there, someone gave permission for it to go there, but I don't know if the people who did that actually looked at the policy as to what is allowed, because according to the Chairman of the Conservation Commission, there is stipulation that signage is not to go there. Right now, the sign is still there, and nothing has happened, and neither has there been any public response by the Board of Selectmen. So that tells you, one, how much of priority signage is, and two, you know, that whole thing of turf was.
I mean, I would, I mean, honestly, I would go back to, this has been approved by the Board of Selectmen in front of a Board of Selectmen. It's, shouldn't be an issue, shouldn't? But if we err on the other side of, it could also be a fiscal responsibility issue that we backburner for now, because our town is in a bit of a heap.
Might be.
I mean, you know, I mean, we could also spin it that way, too, and just steer clear of everybody.
The Highway is the one who handles the budget end of it.
Okay.
So that, that might be the case.
But I, yeah, I mean, I would hate to, you know, somebody who's been running their department for a number of years, and they like the sign that's been hanging on the wall, as if they are as, what's the right word?
Or in some instances, we're going through this right now with the parking signs. Some people in the town are reluctant to upset neighborhoods by putting signage up in certain areas. I can think of one area in particular, on Williams and Main Street, that the neighbors are going to be upset, because they've been parking there for quite a long time, and it was passed in a bylaw that they're not supposed to park there anymore. So this town vote was, how many months ago?
Yeah.
No signs have gone up yet, then that becomes the next piece, put the signs up, now the police have to enforce it. Do the police really want to, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So, one thing about Dayton, and they're proud of this, is they like to stay family-oriented town with a big heart, and not ruffled feathers, to be practical, if you will, so. I just wonder if we, how much time we want to spend dealing or navigating through all that political pushback that we can. Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, so let's just maybe not, this is not as, actually, it's not a priority at the moment.
Yeah, I would, I mean, you want to make it, put it on the priority list, yeah, but I wouldn't make it a major priority.
I would say...
The parking lot of the priority list?
I would kind of, I would say, I would defer to, like, kind of Parks and Rec, and say that, like, we could assist them if they were interested in it, but if there's not interest in it, it's not a priority for us to push.
All right. Any other thoughts on the matter?
Yeah.
All right, moving on. You good? Okay. Number 23. Promote community cleanups in our neighborhoods, parks, and recreation facilities.
Jonathan really wants to see this done, and he'd like to see it done in September. Now, it's my understanding that Open Space is supposed to take the lead on this, according to Jonathan? Is that correct?
I think what, if it's a conversation that I was privy to, and a part of, was that Jonathan had brought up Community Cleanup Days when, around the time I became Chairman, and I had mentioned to him that, having gone through this plan, I had seen that this, the Community Cleanup Day was in fact something that fell into our laps, or something that we could navigate. So I had said to him, hey, you know, this is something we could do, and I believe his response was, what we would want to do is a forward, community-facing situation where everybody's included. He didn't want that to be kind of cross or entangled with a recent community cleanup that was organized. I think it was even not, it was Earth Day, it was down at the 1821, the restaurant, 1821?
Yes.
Okay, another group?
Yeah.
A politically motivated group, I believe.
Right.
So, and that's, that's fantastic, but then my comment to him was, you know, I mean, Open Space can definitely take credit for those portions of those days, because that falls as, as a town, and I'm not saying we take credit for it, but if we check it off the list as something that's been done, we could very well do that, because it's been done.
I don't know what happened last year, but in the past, the two previous ones that I was involved in, Tom Ferry played a role, was involved in, he was a big help.
Yeah.
He provided bags, and he also, we left the bags at certain locations, and his guys came and picked them up.
That's where you told me that, yeah, I think you mentioned that last month.
So involving him in this, I mean, if it's the charge of Open Space, then I'm all for it. You know, and how we take it is something that we should have as an agenda item for planning purposes.
Yeah.
We wanted to do something in September, so I don't know if, you know, we don't have much time.
Yeah, we're only meeting one more time between now and then, we would have to almost have like a subcommittee just take the lead on it, if that were the case.
We talked about that previously, and then we kind of put the subcommittee's idea on hold while we finished going through the actions.
Well, the good news is, is we have a placeholder for new business tonight, if the committee still would like to entertain.
Okay.
Yeah. So let me just make sure I'm understanding that we want to probably pull number 23 and two.
Yeah, so 23 is definitely a priority.
Priority, discuss in September. Actually, so, okay, so if we, we could actually avoid discussing it in September, if during new business tonight, the committee entertained establishing a sub, a subcommittee.
Okay. Is someone from the public with a hand, or is that...
Oh, that's our hand.
Okay, okay, thank you.
You'll see, right here, this number will, will change if there's a waiting here.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So, so let's see. Is there any problems with forming a subcommittee?
No.
Without public notice? No, because it's within the House, right? It's under, okay.
The only thing is, it could only be two.
Two people, yeah.
Do we need to decide who's on it? Well, like, would we have to vote to establish it and who's on it?
I know Jonathan wanted to be involved in it, and I had said I would work with him, if that's okay. The one thing I, he wanted to go with September, but I just want to keep in mind that there are two big events in September. Kevin's putting them both on, Smith. One is the Library Golf Tournament.
That's right.
And the other one is the Strawberry, I'm sorry, the Firecracker Festival. So, that doesn't give you much, many dates left, if you want to do it in September.
It has to be one of the alternating weekends, wouldn't it? One of the other two?
I'm sorry?
It would have to be one of the other two weekends of the month, yeah.
Probably, yeah.
We could do October, maybe, like, beginning of October.
Sure, early October, yeah, when it gets cold.
But I guess, I mean, you guys can discuss that, and...
Yeah, that's my idea.
Yeah, let's, let's talk about that more at new business. I bet, yeah, I'd love that, if we can, ask some ideas for yous. All right, number 24. Address environmental equity needs. So local lead partners would be ourselves, Recreation, Selectmen, the ADA Department, Committee, Trails, and others. Address environmental equity needs, that seems so broad to me.
I assume that has to do with the distribution of things, like are, are parks distributed equitably across town, or are there, like, areas of town that maybe don't have a park?
Okay.
That's how I interpret that.
So would that...
There might be more details in here.
Has the town ever really looked at that in their master plan?
I mean, I would even wonder if that's something that, like, wouldn't, would zoning or DDIC have a hand in that somewhere?
My question, Danica decided to put you on the spot. Is that something that Serpeth may have already taken a look at, with Lizette, when she did the comprehensive one?
Like the distribution of parks? That's something that we look at in our open space plans. I don't think that's something we would look at in our comprehensive plans, but I don't, this is... I don't think that was a part of this plan.
Okay.
I, I think Serpeth did help the town with this plan, but it was someone, a previous, I, I think, I don't think that, oh, no, there's an environmental equity section here, let's see. I was not involved in Dayton's open space plan, but I think Serpeth did, it does say, so this says, so this is on page 35 of the plan. It says, "Environmental Equity considers the distribution of the conservation, recreation, and open space resources in a community, with particular consideration given to availability to populations who are underserved or live in state-recognized environmental justice areas. While Dayton contains no environmental justice populations, the Open Space Planning Committee realizes that the grid-style layout of Dayton's road network, along with its largely rural forested landscapes, create some access slash equity issues primarily distance-related. There are discussions to create new opportunities in town, as well as to increase the quality, capacity, and physical accessibility to existing facilities."
No, no reference to agriculture, just conservation, recreation.
Oh, yeah, I think this is more about, like, amenities to the town, like parks, space, and...
Oh.
And things, and like, how, like, how, how many portions of town have, like, a park nearby that they could walk to, like, there's some in North Dayton and by Town Hall, but I think it's talking about, like, some of the more rural parts of town that are, like, like, it's largely rural and forested, that have, like, like, the busy road, like, it's not very walkable, so they don't have, like, those types of neighborhood playgrounds.
Yeah, like, maybe, like, oh, out near the high school, probably, not near DR, would be, like, probably an area I would think is not as accessible to...
Yeah.
What's along 138.
Yeah, like, like, if they wanted to go to a playground, they would have to get in a car with their kids and drive, and does everybody have access to, like, a car?
Now, would Trails fall into recreation?
Yep.
Absolutely.
So that one, I, I mean, I guess, in terms of that, so the potential partners, it does say, Open Space, Recreation, Selectmen, the ADA Coordinator, Trails Committee, others as appropriate. Do we see us having a role here? Maybe, like, alongside the Rec Department?
I mean, I see us supplementing, or probably, I mean, we could petition for funds on behalf of, for Open Space, for Parks and Rec, if that's...
Right.
But, or for Conservation, what's CPC, is what I'm thinking of?
Would the discussion of the land trust be a part of that?
Yeah, we could include that, right?
What we really need, if we could pull, get that off. Is that in here?
Yeah, look at that, develop a community park in West Dayton, we'll get there. All right, so, so, land trust con, land trust conversation, we'll include that with this, we'll talk with Trails, do we say Parks and Rec, too, right?
Yeah. Because one of the items that came up during that joint meeting with the Planning Board was passive recreation, which we really haven't taken a look at at all.
That would be the bird watching, things like that.
Hunting, bird watching, right?
Target practice, target practice?
Either that or just hunting.
Or something.
Yeah. Yeah, tiger practice, that gets more complicated, laws and, wherever, having some problems, uh, with the police range.
Is that the banger 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 up in the village?
Yes, yes, in the village, it's not happening.
It's coming from south of it.
Is there actually a range?
Yeah, that, that police, by the way, has a range.
It's by the transfer station?
Transfer station.
Okay, I, so I could, yeah, I live over there, and I, I hear it so often, and I'm like, like, I can tell it's coming from somewhere in there, but I didn't know, like...
But it's the police, they don't, it's not open to the public.
Okay, I just thought maybe it was, like, someone in their backyard, but like, it's like, pretty regular.
Pretty regular, yeah.
It's like, that makes sense. I'm glad I know that now, thanks.
So I guess, yeah, so let's, we'll include this in a conversation that we include, like Trails and Parks and Rec in?
Sure.
As a sum, okay. Any other thoughts? And I think, thank you for pointing out where that was located, that word, by the way, that's perfect, because that actually seals up any ambiguity I thought it had.
All right.
Number 25. Construct the boardwalk at Broad Cove with Somerset.
That's in the process. It's beautiful, I mean, the concept, what has been designed is beautiful. Jeff Cabal has that, actually computed our eyes, plant design.
Oh, wow.
Now they just need the money to build it.
Does Open Space have funds that we could write a grant for on their behalf, or does that not work like that now?
We...
Are they covered, basically, is my question, I guess?
Based on some of the things that we're talking about, and that has, that is a possibility. Short term, the answer is no.
Okay.
Is there a real need? Yes. The other need is, there's going to be need for money, we're going to pursue the land trust, so as we get to the point of stop working on a budget, we need to stop looking how much is this going to cost? Or are there any outside groups that consult, can consult with us and help us do it, either to cost or to help reduce our costs of using a private contractor?
And that would be for the, the planning or the execution?
Well...
Or both, really?
Both. You know, the issue of the land trust is the legal side, but there's also the recruitment of federal, state, and private. but there's also the recruitment of federal, state, and private donors. And there's, you know, how would that be organized? And also, you're going to need someone to work closely with the other departments, especially the Board of Selectmen, to see how this is going to be framed for a vote by the town. Because it would have to be a vote by the town. It's not something the school can, uh, the Board of Selectmen can just do as a policy.
They can't establish a, a budget with a town approval, correct?
Correct, yeah.
All right.
I mean, it's, it's a great idea, but it's going to take money. I mean, just from the lawyer point of view.
Just hire the lawyer.
Yeah, I mean, you, you're creating a trust that's a legal document that I'm sure would have to be approved and signed up by either the IRS or, or a court. So that's not cheap.
Yeah. We get to pay for all that, don't we? I'd say we as the town. All right, well, I think that's, that gives us a lot of good information. Any other, do we need to offer, let's see, that would be Jeff. Does he need any assistance, or is he good on that?
I don't know, you'd have to ask him.
Okay.
Yeah, we could just offer our support to help with fundraising.
He works with another group that is kind of out of the town, but it's not officially, and that's the Taunton River Shed Alliance. Bill Fournette is a longstanding member, he's the representative of Dyson.
They gave, I think they gave them a grant to do, because I participate in that group too, that fills in. And I think, and they, they have a, a grant right now to do some of the design for the boardwalk.
Fantastic.
That's the, they're listed on here, the Taunton River Stewardship Council.
Oh, TRSC.
Yeah.
Fantastic, okay.
But yeah, I think it is going to be a very costly project, because it's, it's wetlands, it's building over wetlands, so they're going to need a lot of money to get it done. But the, but I think the funding they have right now is to do designs.
Without far along.
Feasibility, yeah, like, like probably preliminary designs, not like final designs, but I don't remember.
The TRSC, is that the same as the Taunton River Watershed Alliance? Or is that something?
They're, they're different, but like the Taunton River Watershed Alliance hosts it.
Okay.
So they're, they're connected. The Taunton River Stewardship Council is, because the Taunton River is designated a wild and scenic river, it's like a national designation. So that's like a council that kind of is responsible for the stewardship of the Taunton River as a wild and scenic river. And the Taunton River Watershed Alliance hosts them, and like hosts the meetings at their watershed center at Sweets Knoll.
Okay.
Does one report to the other, or are they kind of ambiguous side by side?
They're like side by side, so like, like the Taunton River Watershed Alliance is part of the council, and they're, so like the Taunton River Stewardship Council gets funding from the National Park Service to give out grants. So that's what, like the grant that they gave out for Broad Coves, they will fund projects anywhere in the Taunton River watershed. And so the Taunton River Watershed Alliance manages that fund, like on behalf of the council.
Are those meetings open to the public?
I think so.
Okay. I don't, because I know they do post them at Town Hall, but I don't know, I doubt anyone would go.
I mean, yeah, if they're posted, they must be open to the public, but I, yeah, I don't think people from the public usually attend, but they are like on Zoom, anyone could join.
Okay, there you go.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, anything else on number 25? Number 26, seek, seek a shared management agreement with DCR for Sweets Knoll State Park. DCR would be Dyson Conservation and Recreation, the State Department?
That's the state.
I'm sorry, Department of Conservation and Recreation.
The State Department of Conservation and Recreation. So that, that's kind of related, so Sweets Knoll State Park, it's a state park, that's where Taunton River Watershed Alliance has their headquarters in the building there. So I don't know if this is related to the Taunton River Watershed Alliance having like a shared management, or if the town would want to manage it? I'm not really sure what they need by here.
So the management agreement, seek a shared, so is there a, an agreement right now with DCR and Sweets Knoll State Park?
What, between each, each?
I mean, I guess DCR manages the park, correct? And all of it's...
Granted through a will, yes, trust.
So then a shared management agreement would mean that Dyson, as a town, would be lending its assets to? Am I correct, if I'm wrong, is my understanding there? Or resources to?
I'm not really sure.
Okay, let's see.
I want to see if it's a good question, huh?
For 2021 people, huh?
Yeah.
All right, let's see, where are we? Sweet.
But in 2021, I'm trying to think, it's Taunton River Watershed Alliance was in that property in 2021. They only moved there, they used to be located elsewhere. Yeah, I don't know, I mean, I don't know why the town would want shared management unless...
To my knowledge, they don't.
Yeah, like if it was a maintenance issue where they felt like the park wasn't being maintained, or...
They would, I mean, the Selectmen would probably be the first to hear about that, wouldn't they?
Yeah, oh, it does say local lead, Selectmen, and EEA, DCR, so maybe this is not really relevant to us. Maybe we're trying to understand something that isn't relevant to us anyway. Management needs, yeah, I would...
I mean, you attend those meetings, and Bill is the representative of Dyson. Do they get into any discussions of responsibilities and...
Not about Sweets Knoll, yeah. I, I mean, we could look further, not right now, but, oh, look.
Thank you.
No, it's, okay, this is progress made since the last plan, the establishment, the establishment of Sweets Knoll State Park by Massachusetts DCR. So do you know when Sweets Knoll was established?
Not off the top of my head, no.
It was at some point since 2003.
It's relatively recent.
Yeah.
Last 20 years, yes. So, yeah, I don't... Before passing, bequeathed the land to the state, which was really nice, because...
Fifty-four acres, huh? Fifty-four acres?
Yeah.
Lovely.
That was a huge donation.
And it worked out in the town's favor, sounds like?
I would say the town, everyone's favorite, I mean, obviously developers had their way. But, so if you're a conservationist and you look for open space, it was great. If you're a developer, it wasn't so great. Well...
It mentions, yeah, it doesn't say anything specific. It just mentions, so Section 5 is like the inventory of existing parcels. On page 43, it mentions Sweets Knoll State Park owned by the Department of Conservation and Recreation, but it doesn't say anything specific about it. So I, yeah, I don't, I don't really understand what that action is trying to do.
I will ask from the leaders if they...
Yeah?
I doubt there is.
All right.
But that would be like a legal matter that I think the town, like that would be the responsibility of the Selectmen.
Yeah. I mean, they're either in an agreement or they're not, and I don't know if they'd be wise to pursue an agreement. We have enough on our plate as a town.
As a town financially, yeah, instead of adding to the labor cost.
Yeah.
Because I know DCR was having some serious maintenance personnel issues.
Yeah.
They got more properties than they can take care of, so.
So I, I wonder if now that the TRWA is there, if they're helping with maintenance?
I don't know.
Because I, I've, I've been to that site, and it doesn't seem like maintenance is an issue, so maybe, maybe that was the issue. Maintenance used to be, that maybe they were, there was a concern in 2021 about who would maintain the site, but maybe it's not relevant anymore.
By now, for it? Yes. Thank you. Great. So what we'll do is put a note for member reports next month at the top of the agenda.
Okay.
Member address, I, I'll think of a nice way to say that, but I'd really actually like to start doing that more of, like, as we get into the heap of all of this, as we have our committees and stuff. Yeah, you know what I mean, like you report back. Yeah, you know, I mean, and we'll make sure that what we set in stone tonight during New Business, or my goal would be that as a committee we could set in stone is that by September's meeting, all you have to do is report to us, and we can approve a date, right? I mean, getting ahead of ourselves, but I think we'll be good. Okay. So, all right, yeah, I did jump ahead of ourselves, I apologize. Reeling it in, back to number 26, are we good to move on from there? Sweets Knoll State Park?
I think so, yeah, I'm going to kind of hold on that and come back to it.
All right.
Number 27, find a permanent office space for the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Is that really our responsibility?
I mean, I guess we can ask Kevin if he needs a real estate agent, but...
Do they have a space? Where are they? Where do, I mean, is, okay. Is the Parks and Recreation Commission just a volunteer commission? It's not like, there's not staff?
Correct.
Yeah? It's not like Dyson has a Parks Department with staff and...
Did they have their eyes on a building? Yes. Does Historical Commission have their eyes on it? The same building? Yes. Is there a need to use that building for storage of books and materials as it is currently being used? I think you know what I'm talking, building I'm talking about.
Yeah.
Yes, that is a hot potato that the Board of Selectmen are going to have to...
They're going to have to chew that one off, huh?
Right, and they're going to have to play psalm, and who's going to get it? I don't know, but I don't see that as an open space.
Yeah, I mean, it's identified as Selectmen and Parks and Recreation.
Yeah, I mean, part of what we're doing is seeing which of these are relevant to our committee.
Right.
Not all of them are.
Right.
This is one of those that...
Yeah, I don't see it being relevant to open space. Because, correct me if I'm wrong, the ACHAD is in the areas of conservation, recreation use, right?
Yeah.
I'm a, as it pertains to open space, right?
Well, I suppose one could argue, but if you want to go down that road, then we're going to need to do more grant writing role, because we got a school and a fire station in the heart of it. And we haven't voted on the debt exclusion for P and B yet, so what do you say?
Well, I knew the two projects ahead of us, I didn't realize there were three behind that.
Oh, there's one I didn't even mention. Some people were brought up at, at meetings. It's the DPW building.
Okay.
Those are huge projects. That's why, let's pick up battles.
Yeah. So we good with moving to number 28 then, for now? All right, then. Implement the recommendations of the ADA Transition Plan. Lead partners.
As it is, as it applies to what we do.
Yeah, I guess it applies to...
There is a need to coordinate that. Kevin's done a great job in that area. The one area, I'm not so sure where we're at, and it's certainly a discussion to have with Trails. You know, accessibility of our Trails to people with disabilities. It's definitely having a meeting and a discussion with Trails, Jeff.
And I think it would be wise to invest even in our, lack of better terms, our aging population for flat spaces, walkable paths, because, I mean, those are things that, I mean, I think are important to a community.
I mean, we're fortunate, we have Jonathan on board, so he can help us greatly with that. But there is definitely, I, I'd say more so with Trails than Park and Rec.
That's where we would see ourselves fit in.
Yeah.
Probably because Parks and Rec has already got their eye on that.
Yes, Kevin and, and Jonathan work very closely, and most of the Park and Rec ADA issues have been dealt with. And I'll be honest with you, those that aren't, it's because of money. I mean, the one thing that we did talk about on the Board of Selectmen was behind Town Hall, the amphitheater. That's a lot of money to get the, you know, the seating area, to get that.
The concrete.
Right, to get it up to ADA compliance.
Oh, wow.
Very, very, very expensive.
But I think it's something that like, as new things are built, we should, which is something that, like, I wonder with the new, the rail trail that like the state is doing? Like, when they build that, I'm sure that'll all be accessible.
I mean, it should be.
Yeah, I think with like the state, with, if you have state funding to like redevelop or improve a park, I think you're required to include ADA accessibility. So I would assume if they're building that trail out, that they would include ADA accessibility.
Or are there any other Trails that could be developed that are already?
Like maybe the Broad Cove one, the Broad Cove, when that gets built?
Right.
That could be accessible. Boardwalks are pretty easy to make accessible, I feel.
I mean, it could be as easy as submitting an opinion or a, you know, just a, what would you, what would we call it, an opinion?
Recommendations.
Thank you, thank you.
But I do, I think a lot of funding sources will come with that requirement, that if you're building a new amenity, it has to be accessible.
And if we do go accessible, then we get the grant for it, correct?
Yeah, yeah, or including that will make you more competitive for a grant. But I'm sure, I'm sure Jonathan's on, on top of that, and, and Kevin as well, yeah. But that one, like, I could see us supporting them on that, like maybe helping them fundraise or something, but that they would be the lead. The Trails Committee, probably the Parks Department, or sorry, the Parks Commission and the ADA Coordinator would be the leads there.
Number 29, provide increased recreational opportunities to accommodate people of all ages and abilities. I think we were just kind of broadly speaking about that without realizing we were speaking about it.
Yeah.
Yes, I mean, Parks and Rec has done an incredible job in that area. So I'm just wondering, is that really something, you know, open space should get into? Or is it something we should reach out to Kevin and say, look, we're here to help you if you need our help, but he seems to have things going well.
I mean, it says, it says specifically recreational opportunities.
Right.
And I think it's, it's maybe like so broader than like ADA... Um, and I think it's it's maybe, like, so broader than, like, A D A accessibility, it's more about, like, having activities available for people of all ages and abilities, so.
I mean, we did.
It's more around recreational programming.
Programming, yeah.
We we did say we are going to look into passive recreation activities, so. And the availability of land for those activities. I think developing those activities, we can have some input with Park and Rec, but ultimately, they should be generating the activities and working with us for us to find the facilities for that to happen.
Yeah, well, they've got to generate some programming because they've got the budget behind it, yeah, so it would have to start.
Yeah.
Be born with them.
So maybe it's something that we're involved in, but we're supporting them by helping them to find, like, the appropriate lands to.
Or building, yeah, for the program. Yeah, the activity. And then do we get into buildings or we just land? Open space.
I believe we're just land.
Land.
Open space, yeah.
So D D I C might be the one, if they were looking for a building, which, I'll be honest with you, there is one building, well, the private owner, the D D I C has reached out for Park and Rec. This goes back over a year ago, and that individual didn't want to sell or rent to the town. So. Some efforts have been tried, but again, that was D D I C that took the lead on that.
Five more.
Yeah.
I think we can get through.
I think so, too.
Yeah.
Should we keep moving on?
Sure.
All right, number 30, develop a community park in West Dayton. Um, I mean, I don't know if we can hash that out tonight, but um.
Is this related to the equity thing? There's, I think, yeah, there's not as many areas in the west of the town, right?
What do they mean by a community park? A recreation park or, like, Memorial Park, Bailey's Park and Town?
Yeah.
Not clear.
I will say there is some land in North Dayton. I won't mention the owner's name, that many people in the field of conservation have their eyes on. It's a beautiful location for picnic benches and a park. It has water, has great fishing. It's a great opportunity. It's certainly something to pursue in the area of passive recreation. But obviously, it will come down to money.
And that person's willingness to.
Give it up.
Yeah, I assume it's all privately. Is, what's the site used for currently?
I'm sorry?
Is it a vacant site or is it, how is it?
Well, this individual's storing a lot of his equipment in the adjacent land to it. There is a fence that has blocked it off.
Okay.
But it has great potential. So I don't, I've never had any discussions with individuals that have reached out to the owner, but, you know, those are the kind of things that you try to find the right person in the town that knows him and see what he will do. I do know Bill Fournette has a relationship with this individual, so Bill might be able to give us some idea.
Interesting.
It's beautiful for, you know, setting up a park for kids to go, people to go, people that want to fish.
It's all in West Dayton, the west side of Dayton?
But it's the Boyden Bird Sanctuary, and there is a trail that reaches to it.
Kind of low, below forest summer.
If you go into Cohannon's Side, and you come to the fork and you take a left and you walk the trail, it's a mile, all the way down to the Heron Run. And if you were to keep going, you will see it.
Yeah.
And it abuts the bird sanctuary, so you realize if they open that up, the incredible park that you would have there. You'd have trails, you'd have birds, there's all kinds of wildlife, there is fishing.
That would be a great connection, opportunity to, to be able to access that whole, because then if that whole na, the whole na, North Dayton neighborhood could access the preserve from.
And it would.
Like, you could just walk in there without having to drive all the way.
Right.
Up north to the.
And the things you could do there from.
That would be really nice.
Yes, it would be. But again, I don't.
I think that's something, so, this is not my department, but Serp Head is, um, it's part of, and it's not just Serp Head, it's like part of this larger, um, what do they call it? The Taunton River, Taunton River Trail. Looking for potential connections where, like, so there's the the rail trail that's going in at Sweet Snoll Park, that would be part of the Taunton River Trail, but the goal is to have, like, along the entire Taunton River, like, this connected system of trails, and I think that's one of the things that they're looking at, like, how to connect that corridor in through like, ultimately connecting that to the future rail trail.
Right.
But recognizing that that's private property, so like, I think it's been identified as like a, like a potential, like, it would be a really nice trail connection.
There's one property that the town over the last few years is trying to negotiate with to be able to finish the trail and has not been successful, so.
Yeah, there's like a few different, like, private parcels that would.
That would have to be. Jeff would have a better idea of how to deal with that situation.
Yeah, he's, he would definitely be more involved in that than we would.
Planning.
Yeah, like, planning that trail, but I know, I know he's involved, like, the Taunton, on the Taunton side, they have their own, like, Trails Committee that's involved, um, and there's someone at Serp Head who's pretty involved in that, that ongoing effort. But that would be a really cool connection.
Yeah, wouldn't it? So why don't we, um, should we include 30 in probably one of our action items down the road?
Sure.
I think that we would want to stand out a little bit more than others.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we might have to look a little more. I I don't know if there are other potential properties in West Dayton. That property is more North Dayton.
Yes, yes.
But I think looking for other opportunities is something that.
What's, what's the situation with the Lopes Softball Baseball Complex in West Dayton over at Oak Street? If you were to go.
No, no, I know.
Muddy, what?
We need.
That is, is that private property or is that?
That is private.
Okay. Um, is it open to the town? Is it?
It is a, it is a partnership, but yeah, it is.
It is private, okay. Is there any opportunity with that facility? I mean, I think, I I I don't know the history of it, I believe the family lives nearby there, very close by, if I'm not mistaken. I don't think it's one of those. As it goes, left, right, left, right, left, right, so.
I think that's something Kevin might have more, you know, knowledge of.
Okay.
I've never heard that they wanted to expand.
Is that something that our D R team uses?
No.
No, okay. All right. And not middle school or anything like that. Not middle school, nothing like that, okay. What do you think? Any comments on that? You think we're kind of at home already?
Thirty one.
Yeah. We're good on thirty?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Let's do thirty one then. Create a trailhead with small parking area, four to five cars, behind Alice's last stop on Somerset, to include the trail kiosk with info and a trail cut to the east leading to the Taunton River's watered edge.
Taunton River's. And. Yeah, that's, that one.
That's done, right?
It's close to being done, if not all done. I know there's been a little crumpiness about the parking situation, but.
Well, I don't, I don't know if, like, I don't know if there's, like, a kiosk and everything, but there is a parking area and I walked the trail, so I think it's more or less done.
All righty then, safe to move on to thirty two?
Mm hmm.
All righty then, number thirty two, create a trailhead on Sandpiper Lane with kiosk and short trail leading to the Commonwealth Massachusetts Railroad right of way.
Is this part of that rail trail thing? Let's see, create a trailhead on the same thing, really?
Yes.
Yeah.
Be wise to have a discussion with Jeff Cabalo.
Yeah, I I mean, either way, I I don't know if this is done or if it's planning, but that would be a trail.
It's fraught with legal issues.
Okay.
Because you've got several property owners that have to weigh in on that.
Oh, as it moves through, to the.
I hope it's nice, but I just think there are a lot of obstacles, and unfortunately, with their legal obstacles, you spend a lot of money with lawyers.
Yeah. I guess, well, I mean, eh, we could always put this one on the back burner a little bit more.
Have a discussion with Jeff.
Yeah.
If that's really.
If it's something he would even want to pull up.
Doable, right, might not be.
Yeah, I was just looking up where else, it's like just north.
Yeah, well, I was gonna, hey, you, where is it then?
It's next to that Aquaria, it's where the, you know, the Aquaria, it's, it's right here, and so it's just north of Town Hall.
Oh, okay, okay.
Originally is.
Oh, right before, yeah, the old, yeah, the city, the Reese's.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
All righty, then I guess we can do number thirty three. Conduct a feasibility study for the construction of a short footbridge over the Three Mile River north of the Princess House Co-op property connecting to Taunton.
Ooh.
Yeah, the Princess House Co-op property. This is like off, what is that, Spring Street?
Sounds like off 138, right?
Three Mile River? That would be.
Over the Three Mile River north of the Princess House Co-op property connecting to.
Is the Princess House, um. That little tiny red building that sits there?
The Princess House? No, that's the whole complex.
Oh, that's called.
The Cooperative Productions, yeah.
Is that like where, what is it, Draca or?
Serp did a big plan on that. Looked at that whole complex.
Where, where the Draca factory is, that spot, Draca, or is that where?
I think it's, goes south of there.
No, Cooperative Productions, the building, the Cooperative Productions is it. That's the Princess House building. Charlie Carlos built it.
Oh, okay, on the east side of Somerset Ave?
Yeah.
Okay, you're, you're, yeah, you're right, on the thirty eight.
Serp spent a lot of time and money putting together a very comprehensive plan about that whole complex, including the waterfront. So Lizette would be.
Would refer to it.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay. Oh, was that, okay, that was the, the Economic Development Plan that was just recently completed, okay.
Mm hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's 138 where it crosses the Three Mile River.
Yeah, see, it says Co-op Property.
Gotcha, okay.
That's Cooperative Productions.
Then number thirty.
But do, do, do we know if that is moving forward or?
Oh, no.
No.
The landowner doesn't want to do anything.
Okay.
But, you know, that's just because he doesn't want to do it now, doesn't mean he might change down the road. That's why I think Lizette could give you, you know, because she's had some discussions with the property owner, Danny Higgins is also, I shouldn't say property owner, property manager. It's, that complex is owned by a conglomerate, but there is a property manager, and they've both spoken to him, and at this point in time, they have no desire to do any part of what Serp put together and D D I C like the concept. The town didn't want to make a commitment because there were businesses in there that were concerned that one, it may make people nervous to want to be a part of that if there was uncertainty, if they were going to stay open, if they were going to have to move. So the town didn't want to commit. They also didn't want to be in a position of rumor started spreading, and that would be adverse for the owner. Businesses would move out, you know what I mean, so.
So is, is it in use right now, the site?
The site?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Manufacturing, oh, yes, big town.
Okay. But this, so this action is just about a footbridge, so I I guess that would be
Right.
Part of the, the, like, having that trail along the Taunton River.
Right.
So that, that's what this is referring to specifically.
But you'd have to take a look and see who owned land.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
And if part of the, that was, uh, that owner, it could be difficult.
Yeah.
He may not want people back there.
Yeah, but if, so if this is part of, like, putting in a footbridge to connect into that Taunton River Trail, that's kind of a Trails Committee thing anyway.
Right.
Um, and it sounds like there's not really interest, so that's not going to move anywhere, so.
Park it for now.
Yeah.
Certainly something, we, at some point in time, I don't know if Jeff's going to reach out to us, because he had said at that joint meeting with Conservation that he was going to have another meeting with Park and Rec, us, to talk about stuff like this.
Yeah.
And we really should have that meeting either here, and Jeff would come to us, or we have it at a planning board meeting and do a joint meeting. And Kevin should be a part of it, and Park and Rec should be a part of that.
Would we want to, would we want to reach out? Would we want, as a committee, should I reach out to Planning and Parks and Rec and see if they entertain a joint meeting?
Sure, Jeff, absolutely.
You know, Jeff and, Jeff and Kevin?
Yeah, he's the chairman, Jeff Cabalo.
Yeah. And then what I'll do is I'll reach out to the two of them, let them know that we'd like to do joint meeting, and see about some dates, and I'll bring those back to our September meeting, how about that?
Okay.
Sound okay?
No, thank you.
All righty then, shall we move on to our final?
Sure.
All righty.
This is.
We don't want to save one for Mr. Gale's return, all right?
I know, it's on here.
The new business piece is going to keep Mr. Gale's very busy.
There we go.
Hopefully, he agrees with us.
Perfect, all righty, number thirty four, evaluate options for Muddy Cove Brook Dam, including repair, improvement, or removal. Muddy Cove Brook Dam.
That's not an open space, that is a town of Dayton. It's very complex. That involves Corps of Engineers, involves state and federal agencies, because you've got environmental issues there, too.
Yeah, they, I mean, they've listed, and the whole gamut, local, federal, nonprofit.
That's a biggie.
So what is it about Muddy Cove then that? So what is it about Muddy Cove then that? Could you describe its current state?
A lot better than what it was when ICI was open. Which, that, I mention that simply because I don't know environmentally, if they start poking around, if they're going to find any issues.
Contaminants specifically?
They might. But again, nothing's been done for a long time, partly because of money, but partly they're not sure what you're going to open up into it. And it's going to be very expensive.
And once you know, you know. And once you know what costs.
The best person, the best person to, to talk to about that and its potential, it's really doable, is Tom Ferry. Tom Ferry, yeah. He would tell you right off, either, yeah, it's, there's an issue, or you might just say it's, oh, you don't want to go down. It will be expensive.
So the Stormwater Committee is identified as elite here. I wonder how this relates to the Stormwater Committee, maybe there's a reason.
Well, it's a dam, so, you know, runoff.
Yeah, I wonder if there's concern about, like, the dam failing if
I mean...
there was a heavy rain or something.
Do you know that Stormwater is very knowledgeable of that? You could reach out to Nancy as well.
The floor.
But the one thing Nancy is not up to date with, that Tom is, because he works with him quite regularly, especially with the Pleasant Street Bridge project, is the feds and the state, you know?
Yeah.
You know, he can tell you some things about... Because one of the things that's going to be a concern there is how much of priority is going to be for the state and feds. I mean, it might be a priority left, but state and feds, it may not be a priority to them. And that's something Tommy, Tommy could tell you.
If we are interested in dam repair or removal, I know who at the state, like, we could, just because, like, in my work, I work on a lot of these types of projects, like, or, I mean, not like me personally, but like, I'm aware, like, like, we work with towns who apply for these types of projects. So like, like DER is listed here, that's, that's the State Division of Ecological Restoration. They would provide, like, guidance and technical assistance, and they also have funding programs.
If you talk to Tommy, make
For dams?
Make him aware of this.
Yeah, but we, like, we would want to understand, like, why is it on here as a priority? Like, why are people, why are we interested in removing it? So I think, yeah, like, maybe Tom would know.
Yes.
Maybe Nancy, I say, just because the Stormwater Committee is listed here, we could find out more about, like, what's going on at that site and why there's interest. And if there is interest in moving forward, then we could, like, reach out to DER about...
And the one thing about Nancy, she's been involved in town government for fifty years. So she knows the history behind it and what the whys for her and the why-nots.
Well, put that one on our back burner. How about this? I'd like to propose that we all have homework between now and the next three weeks or so. And we can go through these action items, the ones that we, I mean, I think it's sixteen, twenty-three, twenty-six, and thirty, but I could be wrong. See if there's anything in here that stands out, and then we'll throw those on the meeting, and we'll speak to sixteen, twenty-three, twenty-six, and thirty, or whatever those numbers are. Is that okay?
Like, you mean the ones that we said we would have a role in?
Yeah, exactly.
And then, like, so what was the next, where's this?
Or do we want the next meeting to discuss what our role is?
Yeah, kind of, so the next item on the agenda is open space action item priorities. So like, we would kind of have that discussion.
So that's where we'll put that then, we'll roll that into the next meeting? You want to do that?
Create a priority list.
Yeah, that was the idea behind it, I thought, right?
Now, how, how big a priority list, top ten, all of them?
Well, we've identified, let's see, I've starred all the ones that we said that we would work on. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine? Maybe this one? The, so, yeah, we didn't really say, for, for the Muddy Cove Brook Dam, is that something that maybe we'd be involved in?
Um...
We could support.
Yeah, we would support Tom Ferry and Nancy or DER. Correct, did I understand that correct?
Yes.
Your sentiment on that?
So that's like ten, there's ten actions that we identified that we could have a role in. So I guess it would be us reviewing those ten actions, thinking more about them.
And prioritizing them.
And then thinking, yeah, and then maybe thinking about which ones are our top priorities.
Could you give me the numbers from sixteen, twenty-three?
Number eleven and twelve, oh, okay, actually, that's two. So eleven and twelve are two that I had said that we would support the Trails Committee. Number thirteen, fourteen, sixteen, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-nine, thirty, and thirty-four.
Thirty-four?
Yes. So those are things that we can potentially support. So then for next time, we'd be reviewing these and then next time prioritize, like, which ones are priorities for us.
So then, I guess we'll then move the action items off of old business. Okay, and I mean, I guess, well, would, do we want action item priorities as old business or new business next time?
You can just table it.
Recreation plan, eh, we'll just probably just keep calling it Recreation Plan.
Well, yeah, we would want to table that to next meeting. So would, would you like me to make a motion to table the open space action item priorities to our next meeting?
We'll discuss it.
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay.
Fantastic, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. So we'll table our priorities to the next meeting. Is there any new business to discuss?
We said that we were going to talk about the potential for a cleanup. And with that being said, creation of a subcommittee and picking a date, probably in October. And also, do we really want to do it?
We do.
I know John is very much in favor of doing something. It'd be nice if we could reach out to some of the groups, like Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, to see if they could help to get it going. And then reaching out to the public and getting public volunteers out, similar to what they do during Earth Day. Going forward, and as we think about our budget, it's kind of short to do anything this year, but I know in other communities that do cleanup days, they either have budgeted monies or they get sponsors. And they have some type of thank you after the clean, at the end of cleanup day. I know in Taunton, we used to do hot dogs and ice cream, drinks. Get a couple, you know, entertainers to come, to make it somewhat a fun way. When money was tight, you would give them t-shirts. So, you know, that's something to think about as we go forward. This year just saw it getting started. I don't think Open Space has any money in the budget to do that. And it's kind of short notice to reach out to vendors, eh, to ask for donations. Especially with Dyton right now, the vendors, the shop owners are being asked by the library, friends of the library for donations for the golf tournament. So... Try to keep it small this year and get organized.
Yeah, we could make it a volunteer event. We won't have a budget to provide any type of, like, thank you, like, incentives to show up. But we could volunteer our time to, like, host the event, advertise it on, like, Facebook and throughout town, like, make flyers. Like, we could just advertise it, recruit volunteers ourselves. Although I don't know what the... In terms of, like, what would the implications be of us hosting a volunteer event? Because I know, like, having been involved in, like, volunteer cleanups in the past, like, usually it's hosted by a group that has, like, insurance that would cover, like, if a volunteer was injured while doing a cleanup or something, like, I don't know. Like, 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 could we host an event like that if we don't have that type of?
I believe if we host it as the town, right?
Yeah.
And Kevin Smith would probably know the best answer to that, really.
Yeah, because we don't have a TA.
Yeah. But I would imagine that...
So we would, we would, so it would be like a town-hosted event?
Right.
And then who would we have to get? So would we have to get permission from, like, the selectmen?
Oh, the selectmen and, um, Tom Ferry.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah. You know, Tom can make it easy, Tom is into defining authority, but...
And you said he's done events like that in the past, so...
Oh, yes, oh, yes, he's been a big help.
So I guess...
During Earth Day.
What we would need to do then is somebody, eh, here's what my thoughts are, just kind of reading the Committee Quick Stewie Guide, is that we would create a special committee for the purpose of a town cleanup. Eh, they would be responsible for picking a date, contacting highway department for approval of bags and pickup, advertisement, and then I'd be willing, as chairman, to approach the selectmen to get approval.
Okay.
Um, so I imagine, if that all sounds
Yeah.
nice off the gate, what do you think so far?
I'll talk to Jonathan. It'll be of some help.
Okay. Is there a, a motion on the table to create a subcommittee for the purpose of Town Cleanup Day?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. All righty, so, um...
I would be willing to serve on it with Jonathan, if that's okay?
Yeah, let's go ahead.
I know Jonathan was the one who had originally brought up this up and wanted to see it done, so...
So we created the committee, now we can appoint the two members. Is there a motion on, let's see, I believe, how do we do this properly? Because I know Jonathan is, is a yes, and you're a yes, and you're a proxy to him as a yes at this moment also.
So can I, like, make a motion to nominate that Jonathan and Leonard be served on this committee and?
I would like that.
I'll second it.
Eh, yeah.
Okay.
Great, um, all, all in favor? Aye.
Thank you. Jonathan be happy. Jonathan is back in town, so... He was in Idaho, but he's back home for his surgery. We'll give it back to you on a day, Karen, in October.
Do you have a name for the subcommittee? Subcommittee for the Purpose of Organizing Town Cleanup Event?
Town Cleanup, Subcommittee, town, what would you like to be called?
Dyton Cleanup Day Committee.
Okay, Dyton Cleanup Day, I like that allusion. To Dyton Cleanup Day Subcommittee.
Yeah.
Is the other, you said there was an event, it was an Earth Day event last year?
I'm sorry?
The previous cleanup event was an Earth Day event? Is that like an annual, like, thing? Is there, what's the name for it? Is, is there a name for that?
First year, it got off, it was really organized. After that, it became groups that just did their own thing.
So it's just kind of like an Earth Day cleanup, kind of informal?
As Rob mentioned, it was one group.
Yeah. I just don't want to steal their name, as long as they're not also calling their cleanup, the Dyton Cleanup.
They do, no, it was Earth, Earth Day Cleanup.
It was the Earth Day Cleanup, yeah.
Would we want to tag ourselves as the Dyton Open Space Cleanup Day?
We could.
Well, we could call it Dyton Cleanup Day, hosted by, like, the Dyton Open Space Committee.
So that, eh, I think it would be important to brand ourselves, right, and get some recognition? Okay.
We should definitely note that it's hosted by the Dyton Open Space Committee.
All right. Any other thoughts or procedures we might need to follow in the creation of a committee? We have now appointed them, they are now well on their way to delivering. I'm going to go to the selectmen and get on their next order.
We could give you a date, but...
Yeah, I mean, but I imagine...
It'll be in October. It won't, I, I don't think it'd be wise to go up against Columbus Day.
Right. Agreed.
I have to talk to Jonathan, which he likes either the first week or the, would be the third week, you know? Yeah, you don't want to go against Halloween, but...
True.
Yeah.
Probably, okay. So I'll wait to hear from a date.
Oh, yeah.
Do you think maybe I could have a date within a week?
Yes, they have a date.
Um, so then, so date by, um, it's fourteen, twenty-four.
Yeah.
Approach, BOS, for approval.
We're going to reach out to Jonathan tomorrow. All right.
Well, I'm looking at the time here, and I'm also looking at our agenda. Yeah, I'm sure. I don't see any other, anybody online, so there's no, any public input now? All right, I'm moving on to the regular minutes. Um, what I've got here are the minutes from February seventh, January, I'm sorry, January third, February seventh, and July third, twenty-twenty-four.
You're going to need to step down as chairman for the first two, since I wasn't on the board?
Eh, we, well, you know what? Technically, January, I was not on the board either. But wait, I thought we packaged these.
I mean, you could...
No, we packaged, um, November, December last year.
You could involve that. Same rule.
So... Yeah.
Yeah.
Jonathan was not even on the committee in January, is that true? Or did he just not attend?
No, he wasn't, well, he wasn't attending, he didn't attend, I think he was on the committee, yes. So then, how about, we'll do that then, we will...
Okay.
Where's my words, where's my words?
Yeah, so I was the only one who was at it January third.
Well, shucks, I forget how I had worded that. Found it, all righty, here we go. So, as it pertains to number nine, the minutes from our regular meetings, approval of minutes from January third, twenty-twenty-four, February seventh, twenty-twenty-four, and July third, twenty-twenty-four. Eh, as chairman, I'm going to invoke the Massachusetts Open Meeting Law Rule of Necessity. I would like to motion that we approve the, the minutes as stated, as reported for January third, twenty-four, February seventh, twenty-four, and July third, twenty-four.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, the gosses. All right.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye. All in favor, aye. The record show it is seven oh seven.
Thank you, it looked out great.
Fantastic, yeah.
We got a lot done.
Sure did.